All right, clerk, please introduce item 332.
Item 332, Appeal of the Planning Commission Decision to Approve the Delmar Heights Elementary School Rebuild Project Number 666025. This item is not subject to Merish Vito. The public comment period for this item is now open. If you're already in our Zoom webinar and you wish to speak to item 332, please indicate your desire to do so by tapping the raise your hand icon. Or if you're a call-in participant, you'll need to hit star nine. And a reminder, if you need to call in to participate, members one, six, six, nine, two, five, or five, two, five, two, webinar ID one, six, one, four, eight, six, three, one, eight, nine, pound.
Thank you, clerk. Staff, please introduce yourselves to the record and let us know how much time you'd like for your presentation.
Hi, my name's Catherine Rahm with the Development Services Department, and I'll be about 10 minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Rahm. Please proceed.
Good afternoon, Council President and Council Members. I am the Development Project Manager presenting the appeal of the Delmar Heights School Rebuild Project. I'm joined by the applicant, the appellant, and city review staff to answer questions or address comments from the council. Today's discussion item is a request for City Council to affirm, reverse, or modify the Planning Commission's decision to approve a consolidated discretionary permit application submitted by the Delmar Union School District for a coastal development permit, conditional use permit, site development permit, and a planned development permit for the reconstruction of an existing public elementary school facility. The Delmar Heights Elementary School site is located on a developed 10.85 acre site in the RS13 zone, coastal non-appealable coastal height limit, and brush management overlay zones within the Torrey Pines Community Plan area. The project proposes the demolition of 52,406 square feet of the existing Delmar Heights Elementary School, followed by development of 66,823 square feet of new public school facilities designed to accommodate 537 students. Processed for decisions by the Planning Commission are appealable to the City Council. Today's appeal hearing was filed against the project and not the environmental document. A focused environmental impact report was certified on June 30th, 2021 by the Governing Board of Trustees of the Delmar Union School District in response to a court order. This focused EIR incorporated as an appendix the portions of the previous analysis for the mitigated negative declaration that the court found to be sufficient. The court later determined the school district was in compliance with CEQA after it certified the focused EIR. The City of San Diego, as a responsible agency pursuant to CEQA, considered and reviewed the final EIR, determined all the impacts were adequately addressed, and disclosed in the previously certified and adopted environmental document, and no subsequent environmental document is required. The Planning Commission's decision to consider and review the final EIR, adopt the findings, and the MMRP for the Delmar Heights School Rebuild Project does not qualify as an environmental determination subject to appeal under the San Diego Municipal Code or the California Environmental Quality Act. Planning Commission approved the project on October 21st, 2021, and an appeal to City Council was filed on November 4th, 2021 with the city clerk. The following slides summarize the basis of the appeal filed by the appellant, Save Our Field. Please reference Attachment A, Sections 4 and 5 of the actual appeal application, and the City Council staff report for additional details. The two appeal grounds address the following general points: that the permit findings are not supported by the information provided to the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission's decision conflicts with a land use plan, a City Council policy, or the San Diego Municipal Code. The appellant contends the Planning Commission failed to properly consider the project's visual impact to protected public views to and along the ocean and other scenic areas. Staff determined there are no visual impacts of views across the site from public vantage points. The certified city local coastal program land use plan for residential development at canyon interfaces recommends project design features to be visually compatible with the character of surrounding areas. The proposed buildings included sloped and curved roof lines and are set further back from the edge of the canyon than the existing buildings. Building colors and materials shall be limited to earth tones and color subordinate to the surrounding natural environment. The appellant contends the Planning Commission failed to properly consider the project's biological impact to environmentally sensitive lands adjacent to the Torrey Pines Reserve Extension. Staff determined the site is physically suitable for the design and siting of the proposed development and will result in minimum disturbance to environmentally sensitive lands. This public school facility is within a residential neighborhood adjacent to the Torrey Pines State Reserve Extension and the city's multi-habitat planning area within the multiple species conservation program area. Compliance with the city's MHPA land use adjacency guidelines, brush management regulations, and local coastal program policies would be required, and a condition of approval pursuant to the city's MSCP subarea plan outlines the requirements to address indirect effects related to drainage and toxics, lighting, noise, public access, invasive plant species, brush management, grading, and/or land development. The appellant also contends the Planning Commission failed to properly consider the project's consistency with key policies of the certified local coastal programs specific to joint use for recreational purposes. Staff determined that a joint use agreement is intended for surplus sites and not required for this project, although the proposed site design could allow for future joint use as the design includes community assessable recreation space. The appellant contends the Planning Commission failed to properly consider the project's impact to public health, safety, and welfare regarding the increased risk of wildfire given the project's location adjacent to open space. The current site includes portable buildings that are 25 to 30 years old, are not fire-rated, and have no running water. The establishment of brush management zones 1 and 2 for new development are addressed in a site-specific plan to incorporate alternative compliance measures between the native vegetation in the Torrey Pines Reserve Extension and the buildings on-site to minimize impacts to undisturbed steep slopes and create a safer fire break. Measures include expanded fully irrigated zone 1 measuring 43 feet with no zone 2, and dual-pane windows with dual tempered glazing. The second grounds with the, in the appeal, the appellant contends the project violates the intent of Council Policy 600-24 because the district did not receive a formal recommendation of approval from the Planning Board. Staff determined the development project review process established in the San Diego Municipal Code does not require the community planning groups provide a recommendation. Due to concerns about ongoing project litigation, the Planning Board identified a need for information from the city attorney before further discussion of the project at a meeting, before further discussion of the project at a meeting. However, nothing precluded the Planning Board from hearing the project and providing a recommendation. The appellant contends the development conflicts with the population-based park requirements in the local land use plans. As previously stated, the proposed site plan includes community assessable recreation space, and should the Park and Recreation Department desire to discuss entering into a joint use agreement, that would be beneficial to both the district and the Park and Recreation Department. The district would be willing to engage in such discussions. Similar to the previous site design issue, the appellant contends there is no substantial evidence in the record that the project provides an adequate buffer to preserve the scenic and visual qualities of the reserve. Staff determined the landscape buffer along the eastern portion of the site would be preserved and improved to shield views of the school roof and to buffer sound. Setbacks also shall be provided to prevent the necessity of fire breaks being constructed in the reserve. In conclusion, staff recommends City Council deny the appeal, affirm Planning Commission's decision, and approve a City Council, a city coastal development permit, conditional use permit, site development permit, and planned development permit. The appellant saved the field, and the applicant, Delmar Union School District, have also requested time to present. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rahm. As you mentioned, the appellant also has a presentation. Please introduce yourselves to the record and let us know how much time you'd like for your presentation.
Good afternoon, Council President, Council Members. Ted Griswold, on behalf of Save the Field, the appellant. I believe 15 minutes should be plenty for our presentation.
Please proceed, Mr. Griswold.
Thank you so much. I just want to write down the time so I know. And thank you so much for the time available to talk to you today. We don't have a visual presentation. It will merely be oral. It's not often that this City Council gets a chance to be able to consider before a school project. This just doesn't happen very often. And we appreciate your diligence and interest and understanding on this. We know that you support education out there, as does our client. I want to make sure it's really clear that Save Our Field is not against the school rebuild project per se. It just needs to be done in a more appropriate way and with appropriate environmental review, which has not occurred in this, as I'll detail in just a few minutes. We've taken a close look at the record on this, and we just don't think that the city can make the findings that are being requested. We respectfully disagree with the staff presentation and with Planning Commission decisions. I'm not going to be going into all the issues that we've addressed in our appeal, which are part of the packet that was sent in to you because we are short on time, but I do want to touch on a couple of very key issues. And one of the most important ones is the fire setbacks issue. The project is located in a very high fire severity zone area in a wildland urban interface. We all know what that means. Back in the 2000s and since then, the city and other fire departments have instituted very strong regulations and strong concerns regarding the development, new development activities that occur in that wildland interface. These requirements have been codified in both bulletins as well as the Municipal Code to require 100 feet of defensible space between habitable structures that are put into the location of that interface. And that applies unequivocally to all new structures. This project has all new structures proposed in it. Nevertheless, the project proposed a reduced fire clearing area of just 43 feet. Why is that? Well, we have some concerns regarding that. Now, in the staff report, under SDP supplemental finding number one response, staff defends the reduced fire clearance area stating that the project actually moves the buildings further away from the 30-year-old buildings that are out there today. And that might be the case. But when those 30-year-old buildings were built out there, these laws and regulations weren't there. The early 2000s fires hadn't yet occurred, and we haven't become more enlightened about the importance of the wildland urban interface, which I don't even know there was a term at that time. It would not take much to nudge these buildings a little bit farther away and be less impactful to and less dangerous to the buildings and the people that are going to be occupied. Secondarily, in PDP finding number three, staff notes that when 100 feet of defensible space for brush management cannot be made, then alternative compliance measures can be used and findings can be made to make those alternative compliance findings. And that's what they did in this instance. Problem is, there is nothing keeping the project from having 100 feet of defensible space. The project that is designed for the school is 66,800 square feet of school over a 10.85 acre area. Let's consider that in the context of what the California Department of Education has said is a complete school, and that is a term of art, for world-class education. Several years ago, and it's on their website, by the way, California Department of Education did an extensive analysis on complete schools and what it would take to be able to build new schools with world-class education facilities. They codify this in Title V, and in the resulting information that came from the complete schools, they decided that a 71 square foot of building space per student for elementary schools would be more than adequate for a complete school of a world-class facility. The school that was here previously had 114 square feet per student. That was the existing size of that. That's luxurious. That's good for the students. That's fantastic. The current proposed project has 145 square feet, or double what the state has required as a complete school of world class. That's a large facility for a limited number of students. Moreover, this excessive school is expansive, over almost 11 acres of area. With this perspective, it becomes really clear that the project could be redesigned to allow for 100 feet of defensible space. There is plenty of space on this site to be able to set those buildings back from the Torrey Pines Reserve and environmentally sensitive lands and the wildland urban interface, and just merely redesign the project to do so. Moreover, I don't think that the city can make the findings that it's necessary, that it is needed, and it's warranted to have the alternative compliance. Additionally, regarding the environmentally sensitive lands, there are significant issues in the findings that have to be made for ESL. In the CDP, LCP, and SDP, there are required findings that the project design will result in minimum disturbance to environmentally sensitive lands. That's not just giving them a look. It is a requirement to make a minimum disturbance in the design. That's not what happened here. Part of that, of course, is the encroachment on the reserve itself. Project is far too close to the reserve itself, and it could be improved, decrease that impact by moving those buildings slightly farther away. And that would be more better for fire protection as well. But in addition, the project is proposing in its fire protection zone a fully irrigated vegetation area. Now, when you use fully irrigated vegetation immediately adjacent to native vegetation, guess what happens? Well, that water trickles downhill, and this is all at the top of the hill, and those species create indirect impacts into the MHPA area immediately adjacent. That's an indirect impact that was not acknowledged in the environmental review and is not acknowledged by staff here. That is part of the adjacency guidelines that are supposed to be looked at in the MHPA analysis on this, but it hasn't been. And for those reasons, a minimum effect on ESL lands cannot be made on this project. In addition, the project itself does leave alone some ESL areas on the property site. That's a good thing. However, the only way that those areas are protected is by having a permit condition that says you can't do anything with those areas. That creates a code enforcement problem for the city because that's a permit condition, and if there's violation of that, they're going to have to have a code enforcement investigation and activity, and there is a slim guarantee that those areas are not going to be impacted. Whereas, in most instances, in private development all the time, the city has required that areas that are ESL in projects are conserved by a conservation easement or open spaces, some kind of a deed restriction that self-protects those areas. If you're going to look at minimum impact to ESL lands, the city would make the finding that such an open space or conservation easement is required in those areas. So I don't think that the ESL meeting, our findings, can be made. In addition, there is a net loss to Park and Recreation area on this project. The result of that is, thank you very much, 643 left. In addition, there is a net loss of Park and Recreation area, and that was not acknowledged in the environmental document, and I don't think it's acknowledged in the findings as well. And while the Torrey Pines Community Plan sets a direction to try and increase open space areas, there wasn't an analysis saying that there was likely a loss. Now, if there was a joint use agreement as one of the conditions of approval, then there wouldn't be a net loss. But that's been not addressed in this situation, and there's been no agreement. So you can't assume that there is going to be publicly available open space in this area. On the next issue, the Climate Action Plan findings that are normally required in all city projects in this situation, we're not even attempting in the mitigated net debt that was done in this situation. And as a result, we, you know, we put in an extensive analysis in our letter and appeal to the city, but I don't think I need to go into those details because nothing really meaningful was done on the Climate Action Plan and should have been done in the analysis. We suggest you send it back to staff to complete that analysis. And then finally, let's talk about the environmental review. We were notified by the city after inquiry that the environmental review activities, that the decision itself was not appealable. So that's why it's not part of our appeal. However, there's a significant problem with this. The environmental review that was done on the project was a mitigated net debt that was challenged before San Diego Superior Court, and it was overturned. It was vacated. The MND was vacated by the court, and the court gave the project proponent three options: do a complete EIR, do a focused EIR, or do a new second MND. What they chose to do was a focused EIR. Now, what's the focused EIR? It's an important thing to note. A focused EIR is an EIR on a subsequent project which was identified in a master EIR. That means the entire project area is developed, I mean, is analyzed in a master EIR, and then a focused EIR looks at a later detail of that development. That's not what happened here because there was no master EIR. There was a vacated negative declaration, which the school district then turned around and reauthorized without change, along with what they called a focused EIR. Now, we've provided significant information in case law, including a recent decision that was made in November of last year to the city attorney showing that that is a direct violation of CEQA and is likely to be a subject of contesting the city's action unless they send this back to appropriate environmental review. With all of that, and I know my time is getting to an end, we don't think there's that much that needs to be done to be able to complete this and do it in the right way. The revisions that we're asking for are not drastic, but I think that they're really, really good. One is, the project is far, far too expansive and extensive for this site the way it's currently designed. It can be drawn in slightly, and it doesn't even take very much because you have excess area here. Require setback of all the structures to 1,400 feet of slopes so that they're not impacting the reserve area directly or indirectly. There is an activity that's going to affect the species in the reserve or runoff that's going to affect vegetation. The MHPA lands will be properly protected. The property itself, the buildings themselves, will be properly protected by fire distance. That's one of the other elements that's really, really important here. Require at least a joint use agreement so that there isn't a total loss of parkland associated with this project. I think that would assist both the community as well as the relationship between the district and school. And then maybe present this meaningfully before the community planning board so that they have a chance to provide this type of input. I think that that's the type of input that would have been provided had it been brought properly before the planning group, but it never was. And that input was never actually materialized in front of either the district or the city. And then with a revised project, do a real environmental document. You know, do a full NOP, do an EIR that really looks at all these issues, addresses them, puts them out for public comment, and then you can make the findings that you need to make to approve this project. I'm available for your questions. I'm happy to answer those. I appreciate your time very much. And we do ask that you remand this project back to city staff so that they can complete the redesign and provide the findings that are necessary for this project. Thanks very much for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Griswold. We will now go to the applicant, who I believe also has an application, or excuse me, a presentation. Please introduce yourselves to the record and let us know how much time you would like for your presentation.
Thank you, Council President Dila Rivera, members of the City Council. My name is Chris Alleghanty. I'm Executive Director of Capital Programs and Technology with the School District. I have with me the Board President Erica Halpern and our Superintendent Dr. Holly McClurg. We'd request approximately 16 minutes to present.
We can do up to 15.
15, then we'll take our 15. And we'll start with our Board Presidents, Erica Halpern.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Council President Dila Rivera and members of the City Council. Thank you for having us here today. My name is Erica Halpern, and I serve as President of the Delmar Union School District Board of Trustees. I am here on behalf of our school board and constituents to ask you to deny the appeal of the Delmar Heights School Rebuild Permit. This month marks a year and a half since our children have been displaced from their school. In June 2020, after years of outreach, planning, and preparation, the teachers had finally moved out of their classrooms and were on the verge of starting construction. That was the moment a couple of neighbors chose to sue the district. It is beyond disappointing that these folks have gone to extraordinary lengths to try to stop or delay the reconstruction of our neighborhood school, especially after we changed their design three times to accommodate their views. Our community very much hopes that their roadblocks end at this meeting today. Our kids should have returned to the rebuilt school this past fall, but instead, we are burning through our facility's bond fund to pay for lawyers and cost escalations. The delay has already cost taxpayers more than $5 million. It's past time to move forward. We were grateful for the Planning Commission's unanimous vote in October to approve the remaining permits and offer many words of support. They saw through the charade and recognized this project for what it is: a sorely needed, long-awaited, thoughtfully created, carefully considered, and strongly supported rebuild of that most precious of community assets, our school. While our mandate is to educate the next generation of children, we are also good neighbors. That is why, in contrast to many schools, the gates have always been unlocked after school hours, and we welcome the community to use the campus. The newly designed site will do an even better job of inviting community use with better accessibility and ADA complaint path along the canyon rim, innovative play structures, and a spacious field that is good for everyone, from soccer games to flying kicks. It will also protect the adjacent Torrey Pines Reserve by repairing failed stormwater outfalls that are eroding the canyon. This award-winning plan for the rebuilt Delmar Heights School didn't happen by accident. It happened because the district thoroughly engaged the community from day one. Intensive outreach and engagement started with the first facility master plan process in 2015. It continued through the overwhelming passage of our school line in 2018, and it was at its best in the inclusive, comprehensive planning process that led to the final school design in 2020. You can see how strongly our community supports this project by the more than 160 written comments asking you to deny this appeal, compared to what looks like fewer than 10 from the project proponents, and that includes their highly paid lawyers. We thank you for your service and your role as stewards of the City of San Diego, and we hope we are full confident that our school district is doing the same on behalf of our kids and community. We ask that we deny this appeal and allow our school rebuild to move forward. Thank you for your time. I'll turn over to Press Law.
Thank you very much, President Halpern. So I'm going to go through a presentation. We made some very minor changes to what was posted to better respond to the opposition. We'll be covering the community process, as President Halpern just addressed briefly, the appeal of the Planning Commission approval that has been brought before you, Planning Commission's approval, and the request that you affirm the Planning Commission's decision to grant the permits. So looking at the community process, as President Halpern spoke about, we went through a robust facilities master plan update even prior to this project that led to our measure amendment, which was passed with over 60% of the community's support. We had town halls, community input process, and all of that led to a bond measure that's post-stated that we would need to redesign and reconstruct Delmar Heights. As we came to the community in Delmar Heights, the board and staff endeavored to include as many people as possible, and we invited anybody who wanted to be a part of the process to join us for five community meetings in the spring of 2019. At that time, we went through goals and facts and the needs of the community, and we started with blank pieces of paper as we went through the design process. We came back in the fall of 2019 for two community meetings in which we shared design updates, gathered input, and then even through the rest of 2019 and into 2020, through board meetings and updates and community input, we made further adjustments based on the input we were gathering. This slide shows the blank pieces of paper that we started with our community. We brought pieces of paper and our architects, gathered our community, and went through and said, "We need fields. We need buildings, and we need parking and drop-off and pickup." And the community came up with ideas. And we went through pros and cons, and that led us to design priorities. Our site had a number of design priorities related to vehicle congestion and emergency vehicle access. And in fact, we had an accident on the site a couple of years beforehand, and emergency vehicles couldn't even make it to the site because of the congestion. And then the buildings being interconnected and adaptable and indoor/outdoor, and even before COVID, we were talking about having fresh air coming into our classrooms. And the opposition has brought up their issue, saying that visual impacts. However, from the very beginning of the site plan, we were taking that into account. Looking at low-sloped roofs, HVAC systems screened in the ground level rather than on the roof, as you typically see in an elementary school building, our buildings are primarily located adjacent to the eastern slopes, furthest from... Our buildings are primarily located adjacent to the eastern slopes, furthest from the slope in the, to the reserve and on the eastern slope next to the Miramontana. We did three updates that moved buildings further to the east and we would no longer have portables adjacent to the western property line in the reserve. This slide shows the steps that were taken over time to increase the size of the field and move buildings further to the east based on the community input that we received. And the appealing of the planning commission, as we look at the appeal that, that is before you today, uh, we, was stated by the opposition just before you, and it's the findings and it's the Torrey Pines Community Planning Group. And, and first off, I'd like to point to a rendering that shows the dramatic increase in field size based on the community input, moving those buildings further to the east. This also shows how we have moved to, uh, reduce any, uh, view impacts, whether public or private, and how we've improved the field and the play areas and have an ADA accessible manner in which the community can get to it. And as President Halpern said, our, uh, sites have been open to the public outside of school hours and will continue to be open to the public outside of school hours. And when, with respect to the environmental issues that, that are trying to be brought up, uh, many of them are related to CEQA. But when you look at the findings, we actually designed this school with the reserve in mind and the findings came in late. The buildings were intentionally designed with, again, those low slope roofs and the rooftop HVAC equipment. In addition, we avoided two-story buildings. Uh, we have proposed buildings that would minimize visibility from the slopes below. They would step back from the top slope. We have topography intervening, plenty. Uh, and again, visual impacts and lighting impacts were considered. In addition, looking at the environmental impacts, the setbacks, bioswells and corrections to failing outfalls would actually minimize impacts to the reserve to the west. And landscape materials were specifically, would specifically exclude and protect against invasive plant species. Currently, we have failing outfalls on the west and the south. These are gullies that are being created and invasive plants are coming in right now and we have worked with state parks to get rid of these invasive species. We need to fix these and once we fix these, we'll be able to treat, treat the water on site and improve the runoff. And we will be fixing it for now and into the future, dramatically improving the impact to the west. Also quickly state, if you've been on the site, you'll know that it may be ten point eight acres, but you can't use all ten point eight acres. So to tell us that we, we need to build in that whole eleven acres is, is a bit of a stretch. When we look at safety, another issue that's been brought up, uh, we have the ingress and egress. This is the current site. We, at the end of a school day, if school was in session on the site right now, we would have students, uh, parents backed up all the way on Boquita. It's the end of a cul-de-sac and potentially onto Cordeira, eight hundred feet of queuing that we need. We endeavor to bring that on campus with the new design. It will make the, the community safer. It will bring the traffic on campus and it will improve, uh, safety because our emergency vehicles will not be stopped from getting onto site. And they'll now have emergency vehicle access to our fields and further down the backside of the campus. In addition, fire was brought up and our existing site has one fire hydrant. We have classrooms that are five to ten feet from the canyon edge and portables, as was stated, twenty-five to thirty years old of combustible materials with no running water. The proposed project would bring more fire hydrants on campus, bring us up to code, move our classrooms further from the, from the edge, get rid of that bottleneck, as I just shared, and in, increase the, uh, fire lanes so that we can get emergency vehicles on campus when or if we end up having an emergency. This is just an overlay where the light gray is the current, uh, campus as, as it lays right now and dark gray is as designed. These red classrooms are the, the K six classrooms moved as far as we could away from the canyon edge. As opposed to the current where we have kindergartners and a nineteen sixty zero building over here and we have, uh, portable classrooms with no running water and a sprinkler system on the edge of the canyon. So not only do I say this, but Commissioner Marlborough, a fire expert himself in the planning commission, in response to the opposition, said this structure as it stands right now is their biggest threat, speaking about that community, and said that in his opinion, this is a great project and he was in full support. When we look at the Torrey Pines Community Planning Group, thank you, uh, we did, uh, share, uh, the project as an information item in June of twenty twenty. We came back to the project review committee in August of twenty twenty. And then we were scheduled to bring it to the planning group, but the, uh, the litigation from the opposition is what led them to removing it from their agenda. The opposition also says that there was a long period of time where litigation had ended. The Save the Field has been trying to stop this project and litigation since June of twenty twenty. Immediately after we had moved our students and staff off campus, they filed a lawsuit. We went through the process and a court issued an order stating we were in compliance with CEQA in July of twenty twenty-one and they almost immediately appealed that ruling. And then in December twenty twenty-one, five months later, after they did not challenge our EIR, they filed an order trying to, uh, vacate the, the July court order stating that we had defrauded, uh, the court and, and with this motion has recently been denied. And finally, our CEQA document, we prepared a focused environmental impact report. It, it uses the analysis from the mitigated negative declaration. It is, the MND has analysis that is in appendix to the focused EIR and we submitted that one document to the city when we submitting in August of twenty twenty-one. This is the only CEQA document that the district submitted to the city as part of our current project application. Finally, the planning commission approved unanimously. I will not read all of their comments, but in their unanimous approval, they, they rebuffed, uh, the issues raised by the attorney who spoke on behalf of Save the Field. Uh, and we would, I'll ask our superintendent, Dr. McClurg, to finish our presentation. Thank you.
Good afternoon, city council members. As our district superintendent, I want to share with you how important this project is to our district students. Our top priorities, um, as a district are to have a safe and improved structure and a school that meets the needs of our students now and into the future. And this plan really does accomplish both of those. The current buildings have completely outlived their useful lives and the school is in need of a full replacement. And a full replacement is actually what the community has asked for and that is what they voted for when they approved Measure MM. Our students have been off campus, as has been stated, in order to rebuild a school that was old, it's dilapidated, it's in desperate need of the rebuild. And this school design incorporates features that will meet the needs of these kids, their educational needs. It's been designed to incorporate interconnection as a campus so that spaces can be used flexibly. It has indoor/outdoor connections that allow our children to collaborate and to learn and settings that give them natural light and fresh air. And we know now more than ever with COVID how important that is. It's been designed to give our children and our staff adjacency and access to actually large, well-appointed fields and, and multiple places to play outdoors. And we know how important our students' health and wellbeing is. It does all of those things. It is a wonderful, wonderful campus that has multi-use spaces that bring kids together indoors and outdoors that will allow them to create and innovate in ways that we know are so important for our kids. Beautiful views will give them access, ready access to nature. It will inspire them to enrich and enrich their experience. They're the kids, they're actually the future stewards of our community and it makes me excited to think about the fact that they'll be able to be part of that at this campus. And unfortunately, it is a small group that has caused this project to be significantly delayed. It's displacing our students and our staff and it's costing our district millions of dollars. Uh, it's an outstanding project designed to meet the needs of our kids. We, as a district, take the responsibility for educating our children very seriously. And as a staff, we've shown time and time again that we make decisions with great intent and purpose. We are very thoughtful in how we move ahead with projects and every decision in our district. And when our DMUSD children were attending our schools in person across our district this year and also last year, our Delmar Heights kids were not on their campus. It has been a year and a half that our students at Delmar Heights have not been at their school. And as our Delmar Heights students and staff move through this second year off campus, I ask that you please support this project. You affirm the planning commission's decision to grant the permits and you help us bring our students and our staff back to their school. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you to, um, the, the applicant, the appellate and staff for your presentations there. Um, clerk, please proceed to public comment.
Yes, thank you, Council President. We do have quite a number of folks in our queue, so it will be one minute apiece. We'll start with Jesse Barrett, followed by Mike Milligan, followed by Ian Philip. And we have twenty speakers in the queue. Uh, Jesse Barrett, you can have up to one minute, go ahead.
Hello, President, uh, Dila Rivera and members of the city council and everyone watching on Zoom. I'm so excited for today. We've been waiting for the day for a long time. Today we get permission to build our kids' school and today we win. My name is Jesse Barrett and I moved to Delmar in nineteen ninety-nine. My wife Bethany and I have two daughters that attend Delmar Heights Elementary in fourth and second grade. I have the privilege of serving as a crossing guard at the school and I serve as president of the dads' club. We have been working for years to get our school rebuilt and we have solicited tons of feedback from many, many members of the community and community consensus has brought us a great plan. But this extensive process has been hijacked by a few selfish people. Attorneys with deep pockets have stolen from our children, caused them to be bused to other schools and stolen money from every child in the Delmar Human School District. We are not going to give up and today, when we prevail, we are not going to forget these people. Like to give a couple of shout-outs and lastly, thank all the wonderful people who put in so much effort to overcome these couple of rotten apples. This process has forged new friendships and brought many of us closer together. I look forward to celebrating our new school and continuing to build our great community.
Thank you so much. Mike Milligan is our next speaker, followed by Ian Philip, followed by Y H. There are nineteen speakers in the queue, you can have one minute, Mr. Milligan.
Thank you. My name is Mike Milligan. I have three kids at the Heights. It's absolutely crazy to me this has taken so long. There are five people that have weaponized CEQA against four hundred and eighty kids aged five to twelve. It's laughable, sickening and sad. We had a hundred and sixty-three in support of this rebuild when I looked at the, the website. Only six people were opposed and some of them are being paid to oppose it. We need to listen to the experts. There was leaking water in your house. Would you call an expert like a plumber or the Helen Camp family? The fire marshal approved the project as it's safe for kids. Should we trust his opinion of the IP attorney named John Gartman? When you want to design a safe school, would you build, you know, would you listen to an architect that's built forty-four other schools? Or would you listen to the Huggins and the Corey's? Place more extensive noise study on this elementary school than they did on NFL stadium. Should we listen to experts or Row Martin who just makes noise? Again, this is such a waste of time and taxpayer money. Five million dollars is crazy. Kids have lost so much, it's deny this ridiculous appeal, move forward with the bill.
Thank you. Ian Philip is our next speaker, followed by Y, followed by Bryce Dixon, eighteen speakers in the queue.
My name is Ian Philip and I've been a PE teacher at Delmar Heights since two thousand and four. One of the things we count on to put our best selves forward for our students is our teaching environment. The physical space we inhabit and how we are able to use and arrange it makes a huge difference in what a student walks away with in each lesson. In our own district design plan, the physical environment of a school or classroom will influence how individuals interact, their behaviors or performance. Is the third teacher. We cannot strive to be in this ideal teaching environment while literally borrowing space from our host schools. Two and a half years away from our home school is crazy. A hundred and fifty students have moved away from the Heights since this process started, simply unable to wait out the uncertainty. This is not summer camp. This is the educational experience of our kids and they get one chance. School culture is a living thing and ours is hanging on by a thread. We listen to the entire community, not just one street we made this plan. We voted for a rebuild, not a modernization. Find me a house in Delmar built in nineteen sixty-one, remodel it in twenty twenty-two and tell me you're not going to update the design. Please support the planning commission and send us back where we belong.
Thank you. Uh, just a reminder, folks, it's a minute apiece. I know it happens fast. Um, Gibson, Fox, your comments, Y H is next, followed by Bryce Dixon, followed by Rick, seventeen speakers in the queue, Y H.
Hi, good afternoon. Um, I live in the east part of Kamau Valley, so I'm a constituent of District One and I support this appeal and would love to see a modernization alternative put in place. Modernizing versus a complete redevelopment would use considerably less bond funds and modernization would happen on a much faster scale than rebuilding, which would allow children to return to Delmar Heights sooner. Many people in the community thought they were voting on modernization, but found out later that it was a redevelopment instead. The district has a history of struggles with transparency. For example, DMUSD does not list who they've made commercial payments to in their board warrant reports, despite the public asking them to provide them. And they also have their contracted attorneys leading their independent oversight bond committee as well as former district employees on this committee, which seems to be a major conflict of interest. They also have had multiple Brown Act violations and this is just to name a few of the transparency issues. So I would question everything and take a deeper look at why many in the community are seeking an appeal. With enrollment rates continuing to decline, it makes no sense to build a new campus that is designed to accommodate a much larger number of students. Thank you.
Thank you. Bryce Dixon, followed by Rick, followed by Mark Sherman, sixteen speakers in the queue. Bryce, you can have up to a minute.
Hi, thank you to the board for your time. I'm, uh, asking for you guys to deny the appeal and affirm the planning commission's unanimous decision to grant the permits. Um, I've been a resident of Delmar since seventy-nine, I went to the Heights. I have a sixth grader that should be graduating there in person this year, but because of the delays. Has to graduate from Ocean Air. I have a three-year-old that I hope's going to be able to go to the school. Um, this is my fifth year of talking about the rebuild in community forums since two thousand and eighteen with MM. Um, and sadly, as that was going on, we looked over at our neighbors to the north and saw the same law firm and the same kind of cast of community characters doing this with the rebuild up there. And we all kind of hoped that this wouldn't happen here, but like I said, five years later, we're here fighting this. So please don't let them weaponize CEQA and the laws to continue to move the ball west on us. Thank you.
Thank you. Rick is our next speaker, followed by Mark Sherman, followed by two, five, six, six, Rick. Sorry, Rick. If you could unmute yourself, you can have a minute. I saw you. Rick, I saw that you, uh, you, uh, muted and, and there you go, you can have up to a minute.
I'm Rick, I'm Rick Sloss speaking on behalf of Save the Field. To be very clear, that Save the Field does now, is always supportive of-
Just one second, Rick, we'll, we'll, Rick, start your turn, please. Turn, turn off the TV that you're watching.
Recreation fields, votes yes, dependence students from the community and our environment. Delmar Union School District continues to force a flawed plan, tramples over CEQA requirements and legal process to push a mega school, parks, seats, current or future enrollment projects, wipes out heavily used and much-needed multi-use open space recreation fields. Also, ironically, the district refused to adopt its own modernization alternative with an updated school and recreation fields with less environment impact, group safety, which is supported by the community. The flawed mega school project does not conform to local coastal plan. Clear the project lab adverse impact on adjacent environmentally sensitive lands. The proposed project is inconsistent with Torrey Pines Community Plan, the Torrey Pines Community Planning Board has been left out of the many making recommendations. There's actually a way forward, the district can abandon this mega school and plan unify the community by moving ahead with the district's own modernization alternative. Honorable council members, we adjudge, uphold the appeal and bring the community and school district back together for a practical solution that unifies the community, modernization alternative and multi-use open space recreation fields. Thank you.
Sorry, sorry. Uh, Mark Sherman, followed by two, five, six, followed by Tricia Dixon, fourteen speakers in the queue. Mr. Sherman. Mark Sherman, if you could unmute yourself, you can have a minute. I can't unmute you, you'll need to do it.
Thank you. Many of the concerns that are raised in opposition to the Delmar Heights School proposal are directly related to one irrefutable fact. Instead of a plan to upgrade existing buildings and replace the new port, a few portables with what permanent rooms, the school board and developers opted for a total tear down and rebuild. Their plan far exceeds the size and amenities needed to provide the highest quality of education for our students. The current rebuild proposal should be rejected and a new scaled-down plan developed. And this plan must, one, be consistent with current and future enrollment needs that are much lower than what the proposal is designed to accommodate. Two, protect community safety and the integrity of Torrey Pines Park. Three, preserve existing open space. Four, incorporate energy efficiency by, for example, utilizing solar energy and planning for school buses as a replacement for the hundreds of daily automobile deliveries and pickups of students. And five, fulfill all environmental review requirements. Thank you for the opportunity to express my beliefs and opinions on this important, at this important juncture.
Thank you, sir. Two, five, six, six, followed by Tricia Dixon, followed by two, nine, zero, seven, we have fourteen speakers in the queue. Uh, phone number ending in two, five, six, six, go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Hello, everyone. My name is Sharon Frank and I live adjacent to Delmar Heights School on Boquita Drive. My husband and I have three boys, two of which are at Delmar Heights. I wish to give just our family's unwavering support for the school rebuild. I wanted to take a moment to touch on the human toll from the lawsuits. There are currently one hundred and ten Delmar Heights students who are now bused to school. Us travel time requires that each student and parent of that student be up thirty minutes earlier than usual. Two hundred and twenty lives are impacted up thirty minutes earlier, which translates to ninety-two days of lost human time per month for drop-off. There is also a lot of time, there's a lot of time associated with pickup as well. The students exit the bus around twenty minutes later than if they were to be picked up at our neighborhood school, which results in an additional thirty-one days of lost time per month. In total, a hundred and twenty-three days- In total, a hundred and twenty-three days of lost time per month can be directly attributed to delays related to save the field and Protopio machinations. I implore the city council to see the opposition to the rebuild for what it is, a weaponization of Sequa to preserve you. These affirm the planning commission's decision. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, Tricia Dixon is our next speaker, followed by two, nine, zero, seven, followed by uh, Kimberly Holden-Belding. Tricia, you can have a minute.
Thank you for your time and attention to a matter that has torn our school community apart. The children in Delmar Heights should be sitting in their new classrooms today. Instead, our school community remains fragmented and half our students are still being bused thirty minutes each way to another campus during a pandemic nonetheless. The entitlement of an extremely small group has gone too far and I plead with you to put an end to it today. The community and public has had and continues to have full access to the field. My own family is there on a regular basis riding bikes and scooters, using the batting cage and playing on the playground near the kindergarten building. This is a school, however, there's always been a joint use plan for after-school hours. And stating otherwise is simply a, a complete lie. And to the gentleman who spoke, solar panels would be a great idea, except Save the Field actually shot that down in earlier meetings because they said that it would cause their views to be obstructed. So if you want to go back and talk to them, let's get it back. Love that idea. My son's in sixth grade. His final year of elementary school traditions has been stolen from him and his friends by individuals that have proven time and time again, they don't care. Please deny this appeal. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Uh, two, nine, four, seven, followed by uh, Kimberly Hill, Highland Building, followed by Kyle Tala. Two, nine, four, seven. You'll need to unmute yourself with star six. There you go.
Are you waiting for me to come on?
Yes, you go ahead. You have up to a minute.
Okay. Okay, by making the building, more buildings on there because you indicated how many more students would come, it's taken away from the playing field. We do not have anywhere for children to play in this community. And before you started all of this, you were busing hundreds of people across the freeway to come here. And this population has not increased in children. The superintendent constantly talks about uh, playing grounds for the children. There aren't none going to be here. If you add all those buildings on, at the rest, it's just barely at that point. By the way, there were hundreds of people who came to all the meetings, but they've been beaten down by the anti remodeling of the school. I love this school. I'd love to have its stairs. These are this now. That's really what we need. That's what a real community school is. Not accommodating people from all over.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your comments. We'll go to our next speaker. We have ten speakers in the queue. Kyle Tala, followed by Weber, followed by Evan White. Kyle, go ahead.
Thank you. I'd like to thank those that have spent countless hours fighting on behalf of the vast majority of residents in our community who support rebuilding this school. The U S skillfully defended us against the constantly shifting smoke and mirrors legal debate that we have all known isn't really about fire hazards or stressing out the bark beetles in the preserve. It has always been about the ocean views of the litigious Huggett, Corey, Helen Camp and Avrato Martin families that live on near Montana Drive. The majority of these families are lawyers and clearly feel comfortable suing elementary schools for personal gain. This group of NIMBY or not in my backyard residents was called out by the San Diego Planning Commissioners for obviously weaponizing environmental law with the support of law firm Protopio. Protopio has decided to build a playbook to attract entitled neighbors interested in extracting money from local schools. The ultimate irony in this whole debacle has been how NIMBY neighbors are using environmental law as a way to fight for a larger law. San Diego's pays some of the highest water rates in the country for our most limited natural resource and Coach Phillip has repeatedly said the new field design is more than sufficient for his needs. So adding a vanity lawn is one of the most environmentally irresponsible options since grass requires more water than any other type of landscape. Council members, please consider the precedent you set for all San Diego schools.
Thank you so much. Weber, followed by Evan White, followed by Robert McGraw, ten speakers in the queue.
Good afternoon, council members and chair. Um, my name is Charles Weber. I was contracted to provide a neutral third-party fire protection assessment for the school project at early twenty twenty. In the development of that assessment, a number of deficiencies were identified. Um, primarily that the school project site is in a violent urban interface inner area and is in very high fire severity area. It has not been mentioned in the materials that I've been able to obtain on the project site. Regarding the city assembly with party departments requirements for a three-foot brush management zone on buildings at the perimeter of very high fire severity areas. The most critical issue is the proposed roadway system from the area cannot provide satisfactory evacuation during fast-moving and dynamic fire um, incidents. Using the county of San Diego's uh, emergency operation program. Form the, it would take residents all the way to one point, right?
Thank you, sir. I'm sorry, your time has expired. You have just one second to stop.
And uh,
Thank you, sir. Thank you so much. Evan White, followed by Robert McGraw, followed by Pratima Gupta. There are nine speakers in the queue. Evan?
Uh, thank you for taking the time to listen to my comments. Um, I live on Boquita Drive. I eat the school grounds daily for recreation with my young children. Uh, they should be attending the school in the fall, but unfortunately due to the selfish interest of very few five or six individuals who've decided to mitigate this matter and effectively sue our children, they won't be able to do that. My children aren't the only ones affected. There are many hundreds of children affected by this uh, quote-unquote Save the Field group, which uh, would be more accurately called Save Our Views. Um, thankful to the thoughtful design and extensive community input, they will still have the one with ten million dollar views when the school is done. All they have done is wasted five million dollars of our taxpayers' money. Um, they're using the same game plan that was weaponized uh, using Sequa on in Cardiff. Please don't let that happen here in San Diego. If you read the comments, public comments, there's a hundred and sixty-three in support and six against. I was most struck by the comment from a fourth grader who wrote a public comment and said that he's super sad that he cannot go to his old school and he's not able to see his older brother who is displaced at a different school because of this shameful um, appeal. So please deny the appeal. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert McGraw, followed by Pratima Gupta, followed by phone number ending in eight, one, seven, three. Eight speakers in the queue. Robert?
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Bob McGraw and I live in the Delmar Heights community and have children attending Delmar Heights School. I fully support the rebuild and ask that you affirm the planning commission's permitting decision to grant the permits and deny the appeal made by Save the Field. First off, while stating that they are appealing the project, every one of Save the Field's claims are environmental, which is not appealable. So why are we here? Well, just moving forward, I guess the loss is they can't appeal on these grounds, but they're going to do it anyway. This attitude has permeated the rebuild process. They don't care. They just want what they want. They want their way. They've exhibited a very much NIMBY attitude toward the project, except that they have taken even one step further by advocating for the removal of existing students and shrinking the size of the school to reduce traffic. Heck, they even fought to remove a wheelchair ramp on the name of stopping the project. This has gone on long enough. Eighteen months of having our children bused during the pandemic. So I ask the city council to please affirm the planning commission's decision and deny their appeal of the city uh, planning commission's decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Pratima Gupta, followed by eight, one, seven, three, followed by Donovan Hunt. Seven speakers in the queue.
Hello. Hello, my name is Dr. Pratima Gupta and I'm a parent to a third grader at Delmar Heights and a physician at UCSD in Kaiser, though my comments are in a personal context. I'm speaking in strong support of the Delmar Heights Elementary School rebuild project. Please deny this appeal and affirm the planning commission's unanimous decision to grant permits. Our children are starting out twenty twenty-two in crisis. The pandemic has upended all of our lives, but especially those of our children. As a physician, I'm acutely aware of this devastating impact and have reviewed recent data and reports informing that children have fallen far behind in school performance in the first year of the pandemic and have not cut up with math and reading levels. Children and teenagers are enduring mental health problems and are aggravated by the isolation disruption of the pandemic. To add to the stress, a community's children don't have a campus to call their own and their teachers have been split apart and sent to other gracious and welcoming schools in neighboring areas. It's no way for our children to grow up. We went through great lengths for our schools to achieve a no place for hate designation in our schools and this program engages students and staff in um, the topics of bias, bullying, inclusion and allyship. These delays are condoning bullying and intimidation for those who purport to save the field.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your comments. Uh, eight, one, seven, three, followed by Donovan Hunt, followed by Matt Ziskin. Six speakers in the queue. Eight, one, seven, three. You'll need to unmute yourself with star six as a call-in participant. Phone number ending.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Uh, first and foremost, I would like to say that I support the appeal. I support the full process of a collaborative community process uh, that brings, I apologize, I'm driving right now. Um, that brings everyone back together. To say that this is just a small group of people is very unfactual. There's actually a petition with two thousand one hundred signatures on it. Supporting this overall community and the overall modernization concept of this, of this design. Um, unfortunately, anyone that has a, has had a different perspective or view has been personally attacked, vilified and harassed when they speak up, which is here today. When they speak up and what their concerns. It is time to come together and find a plan that works for the entire community in the spirit of collaboration. I, I expect the city council to approve the appeal and allow all concerns to be addressed in addition, gives the community the opportunity to come back together.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your comments. Donovan Hunt is our next speaker, followed by Matt Ziskin, followed by Kimberly uh, Helen Belding. Five speakers in the queue. Donovan?
Hi, my name is Sarah Hunt. I'm using Donovan's uh, Zoom from virtual last year. But um, he is currently in fourth grade. I also have a kindergartner. They only had a few years together in elementary school and this is literally robbing them of that time. Um, several of my son's closest friends have actually left the school to attend private or charter schools because of the inconvenience of being displaced and separated for such a long period of time. Some others have moved away. This means that we have, because of this dwindling student population, we've also lost some of those amazing teachers that attracted us to the school initially. And this is perhaps the most devastating part of all. The current campus, by the way, does not fill the needs of its students. We have had talent shows and other um, extracurricular things that, that should be taking place at our school, that we cannot fit all of the students, let alone those parents in the facilities that we currently have. Um, the longer this process takes, the longer it affects so many kids.
Thank you.
You guys, this is not a matter of business as usual.
Thank you.
Please deny the appeal.
Thank you so much. Matt Ziskin, followed by Kimberly Highland-Belding, followed by Joe Perez. Five speakers in the queue. Matt?
Thank you. My wife Chelsea and I are parents of three current students at Delmar Heights and one more who will start kindergarten there next year. We're strong supporters of the rebuild. It's been shocking to me that the small number of those opposing the project have been able to do so. Been so successful at stalling the school rebuild, hiding behind their attorneys without any real substance of their opposition. Listen to what their attorney said today. It's about your legal hand moving little substance. Those funding this legal activity don't care about any of those addicts, they just want us to sabotage the school rebuild. Selfish, selfish ashings have negatively impacted and continue to negatively impact hundreds of families, including mine. Hopefully, the city council will not only put an end to these delays, but facilitate expediting the project so we can get our kids back in their neighborhood school. Thank you.
Thank you. Kimberly Highland-Belding, by Joe Perez, followed by Tricia Dixon. Speaker's in the queue. Kimberly?
Hi, um, I would like to let you know I support the appeal. We need a smaller, brand-new, modernized school. We need to get rid of those nasty portals. Everybody's in agreement on getting rid of the portals, but it's a finite amount of space. We have a finite amount of green space. Um, I think it would be beneficial to deny the conditional use permit. Because when they're asking for five hundred and thirty-seven students, what that means is you can go up twenty-five percent, which is a hundred and thirty-four to have as many as eight hundred and five students on that site. That's too many. Four hundred and fifty-six was too many in twenty sixteen when I put my, my oldest in kindergarten. I actually went to both schools, Hills and Heights, and I looked at what does drop off and pickup look like? And I was horrified by the heights. It's a box canyon. It's a dead end. It's people, a, a woman parked her car in the middle of the street. It's not safe.
Thank you. We've been for comments. Perez, followed by Tricia Ziskin, followed by six, four, four, six. Five speakers in the queue.
Hi, um, I wanted to preface this, what I'm going to say is I don't have a view and I have no interest in saving a view. And I think that that's really um, misleading to the group of people that are for the appeal. I think is what we're looking at is a small beach town elementary school that they want to build into a city school. This is a school that should have a limited amount of local kids going to this school that live in the neighborhood. Right now, if there was, God forbid, a fire or a shooter and the parents and everybody was racing up there to get their children, it would be a disaster. It's a dead end. The school is in a dead end. I live on the corner of Mercado and Delmar Heights. I cannot even back out of my driveway in the mornings. And it's because of the traffic. And if there's three hundred more students, it's going to be impossible and kids can't walk to school here because they'll get hit on Delmar Heights Road. So adding more people to already a dangerous situation does not make.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your comments. Chelsea Ziskin, followed by six, four, four, six, followed by Scott Tinley. Five speakers in the queue. Chelsea Ziskin?
Hi, can you hear me?
Thank you.
I'd like to request two minutes because my son Jack, Jack would like to say something first.
Go ahead. He can. Thank you.
Okay, I would like a minute. I would like a minute to speak now, please.
Go ahead.
I am Chelsea Ziskin and I am the mother of four boys who will all attend Delmar Heights Elementary School. The children have been paying the ultimate price for this lawsuit and it is time for all of us to begin building and stop this nonsense. To echo the words of my son, I hope the people on Mira Montana will think of the hundreds of families they have negatively impacted in pursuit of their own needs. To the people on Mira Montana, I hope that your sunset view, your dog runs and birthday parties on this field will forever remind you of the moments and memories that you have robbed from my children. To Mr. Griswold and the people calling in to oppose this project, I am going to quote a scene from Billy Madison. What you have just said is one of the most insanely idiotic things I have ever heard. At no point in your rambling, incoherent response, were you even close to anything that could be considered a rational thought. Everyone in this room is now dumber for having listened to it. I award you no more, no points and may God have mercy on your soul. To city council, I hope you will uphold the planning commission's unanimous decision to approve the school build and deny the appeal. Thank you for your time and careful consideration in this matter.
Thank you so much for your comments. Six, four, four, six, followed by Scott Tinley, followed by Shila Krishna. If you can have up to a minute, please unmute yourself with star six. Thank you so much. Scott Tinley, followed by Shila Krishna, followed by Anna West. We have four speakers in the queue.
Good afternoon, Dr. Tinley from the exercise nutritional science department at San Diego State University. Um, I've, I've had the distinct opportunity to be on that field at Delmar Heights as a parent, as a neighbor, as a volunteer, as a coach for forty years. And I think what's missing in this very accusatory rhetoric is the key issue is the reduction of the size of the field. When that green space goes away, it ain't coming back. We don't have enough parks. We don't have enough play areas for the kids. And honestly, if we all sort of like figured out a way to bring back fifteen, twenty, thirty percent of the field, then all of this stuff would go away.
Thank you, sir. Shila Krishna, followed by Anna West, followed by Catherine. Three speakers in the queue.
Hello, my name is Shila Krishna and I live on Boquita near the Delmar Heights campus. My son is a kindergartner at the Heights and my younger son will attend there soon. After an extensive process, we have a beautiful plan for our modern school with extensive community input. It has been approved at many levels and is the express will of all but a handful of members of our community who are seeking to preserve their views over the safety, education and recreation of our entire community. I take my boys to play every day at the school. I love seeing our community congregating, socialized there. To the city council, please deny this appeal. Please approve the school rebuild. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anna West, followed by Catherine, followed by Sanda Patel. Three speakers in the queue.
Hi there. Thank you so much, everyone, for your time today. I know we will have a, a minute to speak, so I just wanted to put in my voice as well. Hi there. Thank you so much, everyone, for your time today. I know we only have a minute to speak, so I just wanted to put in my voice as well and that support of this project. It is in fact more than just a rebuild of what was there. It is to modernize and provide a space for ultimately what is our children, our community's children. It is, I'm grateful that it is a wonderful place for all of our neighbors to go and for us to go on the fields and on the weekends and after school hours, but its primary purpose is to be a school for our community's children. And so I just hope that everyone can outweigh the five voices, six voices on this phone call today with the true weight of the community's desires for their neighborhood to have a school that we do in fact walk to. And we do in fact spend many of our hours there as a family, and so we're just torn apart way too much. So thank you for your time. Please support this building project. Please support our children.
Thank you so much. Catherine, followed by Sandra Patel, two speakers in the queue. Catherine?
Hi, this is Catherine. We are actually a new family to Delmar Heights as of this year, and my son and we are in support of the rebuild project. Please deny this appeal.
Thank you. Sandra Patel?
I'm Cindy Patel, and I'm a neighbor and a parent, and this is part of a coordinated attack by Save the Fields on public schools by wealthy political forces hiding behind shadow organizations. Save the Fields founded by Kelly Huggett, as well as the lobbyists who are hiring the guys as consultants. You just heard from Rick Schloss, who's their hired PR guy, and Weber, who's their hired fire marshal, to try to oppose this. So this is astroturfing in its future in its purest form. The opposing groups oppose each other's inferior alternative plans which don't meet city code. So this is the only plan that'll work. This improves fire safety, improves traffic flow. And we've had access before and continue to have access to currently closed school fields. And there are many parks in San Diego that need a lot more help than the parks here. And so the districts have been great stewards here. And so I think the key concept here is city processes were not meant to be abused by anyone with a political agenda against public schools who can single-handedly use city processes to attack. Please deny the appeal and approve the permit, as you heard from 160 members in support and about half a dozen against. This is what the community wants.
Thank you so much. With Council, oops, Fernando Perez, who's raised for, who's second, Fernando? Go ahead. You can have a minute.
Hi, this is Fernando Perez. Do I have a moment to speak?
Yes, you can have a minute. Go ahead.
Great, thank you. I live on the corner of Mercado and Delmar Heights Road on the south side of 13792 Mercado Drive. And I can tell you that, first off, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak, but thi- this has nothing to do with the view for me. This has more to do with what I view and what many other homeowners view as a responsible decision when it comes to looking at proper planning and the modernization of the school, when you've got a school that's at the end of a cul-de-sac that is currently housing and is hosting 300 students with planning potential for potentially doubling that. I can tell you that with no traffic light or traffic safety measures or even as much as a crosswalk on Delmar Heights Road, you're basically setting it up to be an untenable situation in a school, in a school at the end of a neighborhood. So there's my, there's my input and my minute. Thank you.
Thank you so much. With Council President, concludes the public speakers on this item.
Thank you, clerk. Thank you to all the members of the public who called in. I believe the city attorney would also like to make some comments here, and please proceed, Leslie.
Thank you, Council President. This is Assistant City Attorney Leslie Fitzgerald. As a reminder to the council, the only issue before you today is the appeal of the planning commission's approval of the project. The environmental action taken by the planning commission may not be appealed to the council, and it's not before you today. The legal standard of review is denovo. That means the council must exercise its independent judgment based on the record for today's item, whether the council agrees that the approval being appealed is correct. A court will uphold the council's decision if it is supported by substantial evidence in the record. Nothing legally precludes the council from moving forward and making a decision on this item today. That concludes my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Fitzgerald. We will now take councilor questions and comments. Please raise your hand if you would like to speak. Councilmember Lakava, this is in your district. You also refers to the button. Take it away.
Thank you, Council President. I want to thank Mithram, the appellant, and the district for your presentation. I want to thank members of the public for your participation today. If I got my numbers right, we got about 170 written comments submitted to the city clerk, and about thirty folks took the time to call in. And it was certainly very much appreciated that you did take the time and show the passion for your community, your neighborhood, your school. What I heard were quite a few divergent opinions about this project. And, you know, concerns about the process, higher use of the open field, lack of public space in the community, traffic pattern, some questions about the enrollment numbers. I heard concerns about whether the project, proposed project conforms with measure MM that provided the bond financing. I also heard, on the other side, the importance of modernizing and rebuilding the school and education. Rebuilding the school and meeting best practices in education going forward. Calls for stopping the delays and opening a new school at the site for the neighborhood and their family. When I hear these, like testimony, I look for especially new information. What was not heard by staff in the preparation of documents, what may not have been heard by the planning commission. And I did not hear much in the way of new information. Reiteration of concern, concerns that were not outside the scope of the project permits and more specifically outside the scope of the appeal. The appeals challenged the planning commission's decision-making and focused on the areas of public use, environmentally sensitive lands, recreational facilities, brush management, community input, public access to school grounds for parking recreation and national affairs of the project. I was glad that the school district was open about deserving public access to the school field outside of school hours that we traditionally done and apparently will continue to do once a new project is built there. I personally have read all the material provided with today's docket. And I've listened to this testimony provided by the staff, the appellate, the district, and members of the public. As I mentioned, I did not hear any new information that wasn't previously considered by staff or by the planning committee. I find that the staff has adequately and appropriately resolved the issues in supporting documents and bringing this application forward for decision. I find that the staff's responses to the appeal issued were compelling and more than adequate for rebut. And despite a complaint testimony by the appellate, I respectfully disagree with the item that you mentioned. Many of them diverged away from the matter in front of us today. And so with that, I move to deny the appeal and affirm planning commission's decision to grant the permit. And if the, if the city attorney deems a motion adequate, that concludes my comment.
Thank you, Councilmember Lakava. So we have a motion to deny the appeal from Councilmember Lakava. Are there any other Councilmember, Councilmember Kate?
Second, Council President.
Second from Councilmember Kate. So now we have a first and a second to deny the appeal, excuse me, a motion and a second to deny the appeal. Any other Councilmember questions or comments? Councilmember Von Wilper?
Thank you, Council President. I just want to thank Councilwoman Lakava for his leadership on this issue and, you know, really delving into the issues. We've all been briefed as well. So we got to read in-depth the factual records, and I'm also going to support this motion. I do want to thank everyone for participating, including all the written comments which we read, people calling in. And special thanks especially to the youngsters who called in. Recess is also my favorite subject. So I was very glad to hear that we have young folks participating in our city government. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Von Wilper. Any additional questions or comments from my colleagues? All right, seeing none, clerk, feel free to call the roll. Again, this is a vote on Councilmember Lakava's motion to deny the appeal.
Councilmember Lakava?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes, deny the appeal.
Councilmember Whitburn?
Yes.
Council President Pratim Montgomery-Stapp?
Yes.
Councilmember Von Wilper?
Yes.
Councilmember Kate?
Yes.
Councilmember Campio?
Yes.
Councilmember Moreno?
Moreno, yes.
Council President Hila Rivera?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, clerk, and thank you to everyone who participated in that last item. Clerk, please introduce item three-thirty-three.